All rise. Hear ye, hear ye, the county commissioner for the Alton section, the honorable Chris Cutshaw, please remain standing.
Let's call the October seating of the Hammond County Legislative Body for order. It's our regular scheduled meeting here on October the 20th. Please, uh, call Commissioner Hall, please, some prayer, please, and as you do, remember, Commissioner, please be here.
Amen.
Here, I may be here for the illness, I do believe, and, uh, just as you never been.
Mr. Frank. Your Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come together as three people to decide to say, uh, items in our county. While we ask you to guide our minds and thoughts, if we go through this process, we don't take it lightly, and while we put it in your hands. Father, we ask you to be with Wayne Nace Matthews, he goes through some health problems, and we ask God that you will bring him peace and comfort, and then he will join us soon. Father, now we ask your blessings, your guidance and strength upon each of us. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. I know he was a pretty big one.
Let's pray. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will, turn your mics on, and we'll do roll calls.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Looks like everyone's monitored, there's one out over here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Ladies, we have one monitor or a couple of...
How far are these are off?
Okay, are we working on that, or? Please bear with us.
Sit down off in the back there, guys. I'll let you take it.
We do have a quorum, so we will begin our agenda. Item one, we have no one for recognitions or presentations, and we'll move right to public comments from the public regarding business of the agenda only. Does anyone like to speak? You have three minutes to do so.
Bandenoee, twenty-three forty-three, Joe Stevens Road. First off, I'd like to thank you for putting public comments where they always were for decades, and now they're back where they should be before any agenda item is taken up. Second, I would like to commend Commissioner Howell for obtaining the trustees' reports and making sure now that they are in your packets. That is something that used to be in there, and then about, about a decade ago, no more reports. You had to ask for them, which I did at times, but they should have always been a part of commissioners' packets, and I appreciate the fact that that is going to be addressed now and will be in your consent calendar. The other item I'd like to talk about is twelve D, the pay raises for election planning and road commissioners. As you know, there have been a series of raises for different groups, whether it's garbage or corrections officers, and then everybody keeps coming back. If I recall correctly, there was supposed to be a salary study, and there should be. It should not be piecemeal, well, so-and-so got so-and-so, so now I want this, where you're giving raises every month or every other month, and then there is no uniformity or study in preparation for that. I think, and some of you can perhaps recall better than I, that Mayor Britton mentioned a salary study at one point. Where is it? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move to item three, nomination appointments. We do not have any. Item four, Chairman Doty, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item four A, approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion.
Chairman, I'm sorry.
We need to, um...
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
Apologize, I was gonna, uh...
Yeah, we do have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Green, you are recognized.
I have a question in regard to what's in our packet for the mayor. It was in last month's meetings. It is the letter from the comptroller's office regarding the budget that was submitted, and the bottom of the first paragraph, it says that we'd like to bring it to the following considerations to your attention. If I read it correctly, there's over seventeen million in reoccurring expenses that they are concerned about, and I remember correctly, it's under the Highway and Public Works. I'd like to ask our mayor for a complete explanation, detailed explanation, to exactly what that is. Seventeen million is a whole lot of money.
Mayor, have you got any response to that?
I'm not ready at this moment.
Right.
If you had asked me before, and I could have prepared, I could have answered, but I couldn't bring it back.
Yes, sir.
Can we pull that out, then, and not approve that?
I don't, I mean, that's your choice by vote. We have an agenda that we're gonna continue with.
Oh, I can't, I don't think I'm on that one to bid to, though, but...
Well, that's fine. That's fine, it's your choice. And if you'd like to make a motion to pull that out, then we'll entertain that.
Yes, sir, till we get a further explanation.
Okay, Commissioner Green has made a motion that we remove this item. Please explain your motion once again.
I'd like to pull that expense from the agenda, from the agenda, from the past meeting until we get a further detailed explanation of what the excessive seventeen million entails, across what funds, and exactly what it is. It says reoccurring. That gives me some concern.
Okay, when you say prior meeting, could you, um...
It was in September's meeting. I did not catch it till I went through my packet today.
Well, that is business, it's already been concluded. I don't know how we can actually do that.
We're approving the minutes from that meeting, so if we don't approve it, it can be pulled out.
Okay, I got you. So we have a motion on the floor to pull that out of the minutes, for a detailed explanation by the comptroller.
I'm sorry.
Well, first, we have a motion, we need a second, then we'll go to that. All right. We have a motion on the floor to pull that out of our minutes, the expense for a detailed explanation of seventeen million of recurring expenses from the Highway Department. Do we have a second?
How do you do that? You're going.
Well, it's not on, it's not on, it's, uh, it's not on, it's off the board, I'm sorry.
I'll give you a second.
All right, Commissioner Howell has seconded it. Now, do we have any discussion?
By the way, it reads, that's the reason the letter was addressed to the mayor and all commissioners, that they had some considerations that they thought that we should look at, and if it is a reoccurring expense, that means, by I understand it, it will hit every year, and if they're concerned that we've overspent, and I think that letter details it to that effect, we need to be good stewards of Hammond County citizens' money. We need an explanation.
I understand. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any more discussion on this amendment by Commissioner Green?
We haven't voted on the original.
Well, we've gotta clear this first, and then we'll go back to the original. Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mayor Britton, what is the entire budget for the Hammond County Road Department? Just a roundabout figure. So, impossible to spend seventeen million recurring every year if you only have a four million dollar budget. Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other discussion?
May I ask back again?
Yes.
It doesn't, it does not, just the Highway Department. It says all funds, Highway and Public Works.
Okay, your motion was for Highway.
For that particular, that particular item, not to be approved, because it was in last month's packet, the...
The motion that was on the floor, Commissioner Green, is for expense, a detailed explanation of how seventeen million in Highway, that's what you were saying, and have I...
But let me clarify, I apologize. I want an explanation of the letter that detailed an excess of seventeen million between Highway, Public Works, and across all funds.
Across all funds, that...
That's what the letter says, and I've got it pulled up if I need to show it to any other.
Okay, commissioners, do we need to motion and second that again, or are we all good with the addendum? Okay, any other discussion? Do you need to speak?
Yes, I have a question. Am I to understand, we've already discussed this in September, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we've already voted on this earlier, is that correct?
Yes, the motion that she has on the floor is to approve our minutes, which has that in the minutes, and she is discounting the minutes.
Thank you.
So, that is the motion. Any other discussion? So let's vote the motion that is off the board, correct? Just to clarify, we are voting the amendment that Ms. Green has, and this is off the board, this has nothing to do with our approval of the consent counter. This is only amendment to pull this off the minutes.
Billy A. Harner?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
No.
Thomas Doty?
No.
Igna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
No.
Bobby Hoyn?
No.
Tim Horner?
No.
Joe Huntsman?
No.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
No.
Mike Reed?
No.
Mike Richardson?
No.
Howell Walker?
No. Okay, the motion does not pass, or the amendment does not pass, we'll go back to the original motion now of the approval of the consent counter. Commissioner Doty, we have a motion on the floor, we've got a second, and we are back to discussion of the consent counter. Is there any discussion? So now we'll vote this motion. And the motion passes.
Item four B, approval of the regular calendar items, and on that you will notice from our committee meetings that items number nine and ten have been inserted in. Um, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion for approval of regular calendar items with the addition of items nine and ten. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please. And the motion passes. Item five, yes, thank you, Commissioner Doty. Item five A, approval of the consent counter. Is there a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please, to approve the consent counter.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
And the motion passes. We will now recess as a Hammond County legislative body, and we'll be open for a public hearing regarding our urban growth boundary. Thank you, Steve. This is Steve Nielsen, everyone, from City Public, uh, City Planning.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who are at the meeting at Walter State, I promise I'll be brief, so you don't have to rehear all this. All right, first, I want to point out is, this is not an annexation plan. I've had several calls over the last few weeks. This is, this is not, uh, state law...
Excuse me, Steve. Mr. Nielsen, could, yes, please, thank you.
I apologize.
Yes, thank you.
The state law specifically states, we have to have a request in writing from the property owner before we can annex property. They can't come in and ask us, they can't call us and ask us, it has to be a written request, and because it's state law, we cannot vary from that in any degree. What this plan is, is a growth plan. This is kind of the area we'll be looking at, that we anticipate growth over the next twenty years. As you're aware, we've seen tremendous amount of residential growth over the last couple of years. In addition, we've been working with the IDB to identify property for industrial development as the parks are filling up. So, the hope was with the coordinating committee is we'll take a comprehensive look at where growth is taking place and include them in the boundary. See, being in the boundary, all that means is the property owner has the right to request annexation, assuming utilities are available. And like I said, I'll be quick through this, because this is the same presentation I gave the other day. The process is basically five steps. At the beginning, where we're at, is each jurisdiction must have two public hearings before we form the coordinating committee, and then the coordinating committee will prepare the growth plan, which will bring back to the city and to the county for ratification, and once those plans are ratified, it'll go back to the state for their approval. Like I said, we had our first public hearing on September twenty-ninth at Walter State. This is your second. The city had its public, second public hearing on Tuesday. At this meeting is where we talk about the forming of the coordinating committee. If you look at, and this is out of state law, if you look at, this is who's required to be on the coordinating committee, and if you look at the first highlighted line, the county mayor or his designee shall be confirmed by the legislative body, that is you to confirm that member. Other members that'll be included is the city mayor or his designee. On Tuesday, Mayor Chesney was appointed to the committee. Others include Mike Howard of Moorestown Utilities, Kayla Hollington, who's general manager of the Russellville-Whiteburg Utility District, Sonia Ricker with the Hammond County Soil and Water Conservation District, Hugh Clement with the school system, Marshall Ramsey, who's president in the chamber, and then two members will be appointed by the city and the county mayors. For the city, we have Ronnie Snyder and Amy Hancock, who are both planning commissioners, who also live in the county and represent the population in the urban growth boundary. So we thought that was a good mix. For the county, Stan Harball agreed to serve, and Mark Hicks with the planning commission. So, that's who will make up this committee. Like I said, it's for you to vote on who's next. This is the property that started this whole process. Doyle Wallace asked to be included into the city, and unfortunately, because he was outside the urban growth boundary, we couldn't annex him even with a request. So, we'll be looking to include, or he's requesting us to include his area. Since we started this process, we've actually had requests from other people. This is property off of Thompson Creek Road, Don Bunches. We also had Benny Miller's got property that butts right up to Frankel Reno Park, who also requested. We had another parcel, but I'm glad I took it off. Well, we've had a request, but I haven't seen anything formal, so there is interest, there are people who envision developing their property and to develop anything more urban, you really need utilities, and you have to do within the city limits. So that's a quick and dirty overview of the process. If you all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
You mentioned that, okay, so it's a written consent, and then assuming utilities are available, so when we look at this, should this come to pass, how soon will they have those utilities?
Well, when you annex property, you know, if you, if you submit me a request for annexation, the question will, if you're in the urban growth boundary, the answer will be, after communicating with the utility districts, can they provide you service in a...
Yeah.
If they can't, then we can't annex the property. But generally, as part of this coordinating committee, you know, we've got the utilities, or the major utilities involved, and hopefully, they'll be planning with us to provide utilities to those service areas.
Okay.
I want to make sure in our last meeting, at Walter State, WIT Utility has the water for this area.
That's correct.
And we did discuss, and it was, it was, I think, made clear that Marsh Town Utilities would leave that with, they wouldn't request for that.
That is correct. My understanding is, regardless if it's in the city or in the county, if it's developed, it'll, WIT Utility will provide services to it.
It's my understanding as well, utilities are always, will be available, or it can't be annexed, but that would also come between the utility companies and their, their agreement of who may serve. Like Thompson Creek Road, that could actually be Russellville-Whitesburg Utility right there, it could be, I'm not certain, but that would be between them and not necessarily what we're thinking.
You're absolutely correct. When you look at Blossom Springs subdivision behind John Hayes, that's served by Russellville-
Russellville-Whitesburg, yes.
Uh, so yes. The only agreement we have is with Moorestown Utilities. If we extend the city limits, outside, there's those jurisdictions to provide service.
Yes, sir.
But back to the question, when we annex property, one of the requirements is we do a plan of services. Can we service them with water? Can we service them with police, schools? I mean, there's a whole list of qualifications, and most of it's utility related. If we can't provide them, then we generally won't annex the property.
Understood. Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, thank you, Mr. Nielsen. We will now close our public hearing and reconvene as our Hammond County legislative body, only to go to item seven, and recess as a Hammond County legislative body, and open public hearing for the resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four A, resolution to amend the zoning map of Hammond County, Tennessee by rezoning District Zero Three, tax map Zero One Nine, parcel Zero Two Zero Point One Six. That's that Old Russellville Pike and St. Clair Road, Whitesburg, Tennessee, from commercial one to agriculture one. Is there anyone that would like to speak in this public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and now reconvene once again as the Hammond County legislative body, moving to item eight, and we will take up a vote, entertain a motion for the rezoning resolution, vote for what was just mentioned, the resolution twenty-two twenty-four, to rezone this parcel on Old Russellville Pike, St. Clair Road in Whitesburg, from C-one to A-one. Is there a motion?
Motion.
That would be Mr. Horner, and a second, and yes, we have a second. Is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second for this resolution to be adopted. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
And that motion passes. We will now move to item nine, and recess as a Hammond County legislative body, and we will now convene as the Hammond County Beer Board. We have before us a beer permit for Rami Market, I hope I'm pronouncing that correct, at eighty fifteen East Andrew Johnson Highway in Whitesburg. That, um, that market resides in my district. I have spoke, uh, excuse me, I have reviewed the application for permit, and our county clerk, Peggy Henderson, has said everything was in order. So, um, is there anyone here to speak for this permit? Yes, sir. State your name for us, please.
Justice Piper Tell, and where we had the last time, I did talk to you and make it clear, everything, even I did not know anything about that thing, so it just got a little bit miscommunication and stuff.
Okay. Do we have any questions, commissioners? Everybody good? All minds clear? Thank you, sir. Any other questions concerning this beer permit? We will now close the public hearing of the Beer Board, and reconvene as our Hammond County legislative body. Item ten, beer permit vote. Beer permit for the Rami Market at eighty fifteen East Andrew Johnson Highway, Whitesburg, Tennessee. I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Doty. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, one nay.
The motion passes. Item eleven, Chairman Tim Horner of the Jail, or the Justice Center Public Safety Committee, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item eleven A, change order number seven, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion?
I have a motion.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion.
Twelve yea, one nay.
And the motion passes.
Item eleven B, county inmate labor usage agreement with the city of Marsh Town, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion of a county inmate labor usage agreement? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Horner. Chairman Hahn, the Finance Committee, sir, you are recognized.
All right, item twelve A, approval of monthly checks, I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Quick question. We've asked for a copy of the bills that have been, all lawsuits regarding the county, whether it's planning, or whether it's the Sheriff's Department, whatever. I would like to see those come forward, so we know exactly what we are facing as far as the liability for the citizens of Hammond County. as the liability for the citizens of Hammond County. I mentioned this quite, at least two or three meetings back. It's about time that we seen them.
Okay, let me understand. So, you're asking, this is in discussion, you're not changing anything, you're requesting information on the bills and exactly, I mean, it's in our packet, I'm not certain exactly what detail you're-
Our lawsuits are not noted.
I, forgive me, that, I understand. I understand. So, yes, ma'am, that is forthcoming, okay? That is forthcoming. I understand. I thought you were regarding something else.
No. The lawsuits that I, I know planning, when we attended the last planning meeting, they were talking about how many lawsuits that they had went to court on, but had not had any results on. I'd like to know exactly how many we've got in play there. I'd like to know how many we've got against the jail. The last count I had was 14. I'd like to know where we stand on that and exactly where it's at.
Okay. I want to clarify once again, your question, you're saying in the planning that we have lawsuits in planning?
I remember-
I misunderstood that one. I, I mean, we have cases, but, or is the Planning Commission being sued? Is that what you're saying?
My understanding, they have taken some folks to court to sue, to get them to take care of some things that were brought up up there. If I understood correctly and meaning I said, yes, sir.
Now, that's probably true there, yes, okay.
Yes, sir.
I thought you meant somebody was suing the county.
No, sir.
Okay, misunderstood. All right. So, we'll work on that information. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please. And the motion passes.
Item 12B, Resolution 2225, Initial Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Not to Exceed $4,675,000 General Obligation Bonds of Hammond County, Tennessee for the Landfield Expansion. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Hahn.
This is the one that Mr. Rush will be taking care of and they'll pay it back, right? Yeah, that's it. That's what I needed. That's the one. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Green.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thirteen yens, zero nades.
And the motion passes.
Item 12C, Resolution 2226, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds of Hammond County, Tennessee in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $4,675,000 in one or more series, making provisions for the issuance, sale and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of payment of principal, of premium, if any, and interest on the bond. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yens, zero nades.
And the motion passes.
Item 12D, Pay Raise for Election Planning and Road Commission, to have the effective date, November 1st. I put that in form of a motion.
And we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Ten yens, one nade, two abstains.
And the motion carries.
Item 12E, The Purchase of Voting Machines, put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on this motion.
Thirteen yens, zero nades.
Motion passes.
Item 12F, SIP Service for New Phone System, Met tail Communications Solution, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please. And this motion passes.
Item 12G, I, Budget Amendment Fund 101, County Commission, $5,250. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Can we have an explanation of what that is?
Absolutely. That was in your packet, I'm quite certain, but-
It was. That's for the voting system, I think.
Yes, that's what I was thinking, but-
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yens, zero nades.
And this motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Hahn. Chairman Richardson with the Public Services Committee, sir, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thirteen A, Urban Growth Coordinating Committee, make a motion that we add Mayor Britton to this committee.
We have a motion and we have a second to confirm Mayor Britton as our representative. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yens, one nade.
This motion passes.
Thank you, Chairman. Thirteen B, Surplus Items for the Maintenance Department, that's two Ford F-150 vehicles. Make that in form of a motion.
Thirteen.
Surplus.
We have a motion and we have a second to surplus items for the Maintenance Department. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yens, zero nades.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Yes, thank you. That motion passes. And we'll move to public comments of non-agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission? If you can do so now with three minutes. Yes, ma'am. State your name, please. Your address.
Cassie Slabacorn, at 7329 Sweetbriar Drive.
Could you pull that down just a little? There you go. Thank you.
Cassie Slabacorn, at 7329 Sweetbriar Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't really have anything to add to what we've already talked about before. We presented a lot of problems with the noise coming from Great Smoky Farm. And so far, I don't have anything to add tonight, but I would like to know from you all if we're any closer to resolving that problem with a noise ordinance or anything like that. So, I know y'all were going to be researching some things, so.
You complete your comments and I'll, when you're done, I don't want to interrupt you.
Oh, okay. I'm finished. That's all I had to say.
Okay. All right, thank you. And to my understanding, the mayor's office is working on a noise resolution that our committee, our commission will be taking up. And I understand, sooner the better. But yes, ma'am, it is being looked at. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission?
We're holding 8150 West Point Drive. My question I want to know is, I really don't know for sure, but I have an idea. WIT Utility is the provider for the urban growth out there at WIT. They are the water. They provide everybody's water, all the way to Chestnut Hill. They're going to. So, what I want to know is, if they get annexed into the city, are they still gonna, is WIT still going to provide their water? That's what I want to know. That's the question. Because you see, everybody else that's not in the urban growth plan out there, they have to pay double rates for their water and for their sewer, because some of them are hooked up to sewer also. Because when they run the water out there to Mr. Wallace or the sewer out there to Mr. Wallace, they run it in front of our houses and we were not allowed to hook up to the sewer unless our septic tank tears up. And the state is the one that does that, not the county. Because it's against the law to work on your sewer if you have sewer running in front of your house from the city of Marsh Town. So, what I want to know is, I tried to get a hold of Mr. Harris, but me and him could never get together. I wanted to ask him if they did annex that out there and if he lost his water rights, was he going to sell his water rights to the city of Marsh Town, so those people could be annexed into the city to get cheaper water rates?
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission? Yes, sir. State your name, please, and your address.
My name is Benjamin Harris. I'm the general manager of WIT Utility District.
Yes.
1751 Shimbone Road is where my address is. I understand that there's been some concern about who's serving the water on this annexation, and the answer to that is WIT Utility.
Yes, sir.
We have a 16-inch water main with 160 PSI with 5,000 gallons a minute available pressure and water to that area, and we will serve anything in our district as we always have. And as far as concerning the rates, our rates are not double from everybody else. And so, I have contacted people that called me back with no contact back. And so, if you guys have any questions for us, I'll be more than happy to answer the commission now.
It's our policy that we allow you to speak and-
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't know if I was supposed to speak earlier, but on another note, I'd like to personally thank you guys for voting to give us $1.54 million for infrastructure improvements. We've laid 11 miles of water main and almost 21 fire hydrants in the WIT community, so I just want to personally thank you guys for what you've done. And on a second note, as far as my expansion in the Chestnut Hill, we were chartered into Hammond County back in the 50s. And even though this has nothing to do with your county, we're expanding into Jefferson County, 80 million dollar water expansion. And so, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Bill Britton for being a huge catalyst of making that happen, even though it's not in his county. He's making a lot of this happen with giving people water that don't have it, so I'd like to thank all you guys for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address our commission? Seeing none, commissioners, I have several announcements, if you will bear with me just a moment. First, our November committee meeting is Monday, November the 7th. Our November Commission meeting will be November the 17th, both at 5:00 right here, all right, on October the 27th. Please pay particular notice to this, that we do have tours that are existing for any and all commissioners for the new construction of the Justice Center and also the existing jail, if you want to take that. They are, the morning tours are scheduled for 8:30 a.m., you meet in front of the existing Justice Center. The afternoon tours are scheduled for 4:00 p.m., meet in front of the existing Justice Center. Please contact Trish in the mayor's office to confirm which one you would be attending. Also, on that same day, Thursday, October the 27th, commissioners have an opportunity to meet one-on-one with the design team to learn more about the design or ask questions. Contact Trish for that meeting. So, that is open to any and all commissioners to have that opportunity if you like. Also, on another note, our lead architect, Brian Payne of Mosley Architects, will be here and plans to be here to attend the Justice Center Committee meeting on November the 7th. So, he'll be here for those updates and maybe we can question or ask a few questions of him. Finally, I have one last thing that has been gathered up. A couple commissioners have came forward and asked the chair the thoughts of this, so I got a recommendation from our Tennessee County Commission Association, and we are offering on December the 12th, a get-together for all commissioners and their husbands or their wives, and a get-together that we can just have a little social time together. It's not a meeting. We're going to invite each commissioner and the press to be there. We want transparency as far as that, but yet it is a time just to fellowship and have that time. So, please, put on your calendar, December the 12th. Details to be announced.
Chairman Catshaw.
Yes.
Earlier, one of the citizens asked about the salary study. I, for one, would like to have that and I'd like to see it. And I think it would be invaluable for each and every one of us. I'd also like to ask a few questions if you don't care. I had emailed earlier Sheriff Mullins and thanked you for coming, sir. And I will tell you, everything I've heard is fantastic for you. My question to you is, in our packets this month, we had a letter from TCI that the jail was going to be decertified. Did you get the letter? Because I'm assuming you didn't have it.
I did not get the letter, no. I've noted and Captain Wallace got the letter.
My question is, would you give us a report as to what procedures that you intend to start to take care of the present problems? And I'm not talking about the jail. There's nothing you can do about that jail. That's a mess. That is a mess you inherited, sir, and I apologize to you on behalf of everybody for that mess. But according to the report I read from TCI, and it was not in our packets with the letter, it would have been very helpful if it had been, a lot of our problems are to do with paperwork and procedure, not with the condition of the jail. There's nothing you can do about the jail, and I realize that. But as far as the procedure violations, I'd like to hear what intends to take care of it, please.
I didn't get that letter, so I don't know exactly what all you're asking, but in 2005, the jail was decertified by TCI.
Yes, sir.
Between 2005 and 2006, the sheriff at that time along with the jail administrator and his assistant went before TCI, requested to receive an extension to correct the deficiencies that caused the jail to be decertified at that time. A plan of action was developed, which consisted of the construction of the female annex and the annex built on the back section of the jail where men were and are being housed at this time. Once the two annexes were built and inspected, the jail was recertified. In 2009, the Hammond County Jail was once again decertified. In 2010, the jail again inspected by TCI, did not pass inspection and remained decertified. Between 2010 and present, the jail has remained decertified and no action has been taken since 2010, decertification to recertify the Hammond County Jail. In September this year, I personally spoke with the inspector for TCI, and I was advised that there's no way this jail would ever be certified again due to the facility itself.
Amen.
There are many reasons for this, with the main reason being that the Hammond County Jail is considered an underground facility, which is no longer approved for style of jail or facility for TCI. So, with that being said, the chief and I have been in Nashville and been in contact with TCI. At this point, administration's put into place the first steps in receiving certification once the new jail has been completed. The first step, plan of action, is to do a complete makeover of the jail policy and procedures. This consists of the Tennessee Correction Institute, TCI standards, and building of the Hammond County Jail policy and procedures to mirror those standards. TCI has 191 standards. A majority of these standards have substandards, 243 substandards. With that being said, that means we have to write 434 standards to meet TCI's requirements for recertification. In addition to this, the- In addition to this, administration will have to develop a transition policy, transitioning from the old facility to the new facility. This is nothing more than a written policy dictating on how to transition, the move from the old jail to the new jail will be done once the new jail's complete and be ready to move into. And once that move's been made, the transition policy be void. However, it will take numerous weeks to develop the policy and even longer to put it in place, and this is with the assistance of TCI.
Yes, sir.
Also, TCI requires that prior to the transition into the new jail, there will be practice runs to make sure that the transition goes smoothly and as planned for a transition policy. This means that once the new jail's close to being moved into, it'll be all hands on deck. All employees will have to help with this, which translates into a lot of overtime at this time. This is just advising you the things that will be coming, so you won't be surprised, but there's a whole new policy and procedures being redone for that new facility with all the standards and substandards in it. TCI is involved in the build of the new facility to make sure everything's on track, so I hope that answers some of your questions.
How many more folks will you have to have at that point?
We will, we shouldn't write now unless we, it's a 621-bed facility, and from what I've heard, it'll be 52, that's if we're fully staffed with 621 inmates. But right now, Tracy, what are we running? 180?
About 180 inmates are we running, around 280 right now.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're good. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. All minds clear? Any other Commissioner have any additions? Commissioner Howe.
I just want to thank you again for that. That was, for someone who didn't get the letter, thank you for, that was very thorough. Appreciate it.
Amen.
Commissioner Horner?
Can you just add to, to that? He's done a lot, he and his, and the staff over there have done a lot of work, they have in the planning of this new jail, what they needed, what they-
Taken, got you. I agree with you, the shortcomings that have been mounting through the years, that's of course been addressed in our design, and we'll have that opportunity to speak with the design team, Commissioner Green, if you like, that will take in some of what we've dealt with. Any other Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Doty.
Sheriff, we were talking about staffing, and Ms. Green asked that question, and the way I took it is that you were saying that the additional numbers of staffing would depend upon the additional numbers of inmates, is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay. Thank you so much. It's not the design of the jail, but the number of inmates.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ketchow, you have brought another question to my mind with what you just now spoke about. I realize that we had our last discussion about a contract attorney to deal with the jail and the jail bills. When will we have the opportunity to see who that is and see what they've decided to do and report thereof?
Yes, I think those negotiations are in process. I think maybe the mayor has spoke with this potential attorney, and we'll have that report, I'm certain, very soon.
In the next 30 days, 60 days?
Ma'am, I can't answer that. We'll have to address the mayor's office for that.
What kind of cost will we be looking at at that point?
Excuse me?
What kind of cost?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we do not know these things yet. It's all preliminary for me at this point.
Could we count on a report from the mayor to update us so we could stay in the loop?
We'll see where it goes.
As good stewards of Hammond County?
Well, I'm sure we'll have a report in front of us, Ms. Green, that will show us what the cost is. Anyone else? We are adjourned.